Good evening and welcome to Riverside's COVID-19 Vaccine Town Hall. My name is Cindy Williams and I'm Vice President and Chief Pharmacy Officer for Riverside Health System. We expected to have two other panel members join tonight, but due to technical difficulties, I will be handling our town hall this evening. We're here this evening to answer some of your frequently asked questions around the COVID-19 vaccine. While guidance is continually being updated, we are committed to sharing these updates with the community. After months of preparation, we were excited to receive the first doses of COVID-19 vaccine last week. Here's a behind the scenes look at the vaccine delivery. I hope you enjoyed that. It was a very exciting time for us. So now I want to talk a little bit about the vaccines that are available currently to prevent COVID-19. As of today, there are two COVID-19 vaccines that have been granted emergency use authorization by the FDA for use in the United States. The Pfizer vaccine was approved on December 11th with the first dose administered at Riverside last week on December 16th. The Moderna vaccine was approved last Friday on December 18th, and we expect that we will be receiving Moderna vaccine later this week. I'm sure there are many questions around what exactly an emergency use authorization is. An emergency use authorization, or EUA, was actually established in 2004, and this process allows the FDA to review and approve medical products for use in emergency situations, such as we're facing now with the COVID-19 pandemic. The process allows for more rapid availability of products. Other examples of medical products that have been approved under the emergency use authorization process during the COVID-19 pandemic include many of the COVID-19 tests, as well as COVID-19 treatment options, such as remdesivir. I now want to talk a little bit about the two vaccines that are now available for use in the United States. Both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines that are currently available do require two doses in order to be fully effective. It's important to get the same vaccine for both doses. So for example, if you get the Pfizer vaccine for your first dose, you should get the Pfizer vaccine for your second dose. For the Pfizer product, the second dose should be administered approximately 21 days after the first dose. For the Moderna vaccine, the second dose should be administered approximately 28 days after the first dose. When you receive either of these vaccines, you will be given a card that has information about the vaccine that you received, as well as a reminder for when that next dose is due. One of the tips that's been provided by the Centers for Disease Control is consider taking a picture of that card with your mobile device to help as a reminder in the event that the card is misplaced. Another question that we often get is, what are the current phases of distribution? Late last summer, several groups at the national level did put some high-level guidance around the phases for distribution for the vaccine. This was done because we knew initially when the vaccine was approved, there would not be adequate doses for everyone to get vaccinated at the same time. The Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, or the AICIP, has been tasked with deciding who will get the vaccine first. This committee is made up of physicians and public health practitioners from across the country, and generally sets guidelines for vaccine administration, not just for COVID. For the COVID-19 vaccine, their goal has been to balance who will get the most benefit from the vaccine, based on the health risk of that group of individuals, as well as the importance of individual roles in supporting the functioning of society. At this point, we are currently in Phase 1A of the distribution plan. Phase 1A includes healthcare workers and older adults who live in congregate settings, such as nursing homes and assisted living. Those living in nursing homes and assisted living were included due to their health risk, and healthcare workers were included due to the role they play in the COVID-19 response. The AICIP met most recently this past weekend, and the goal of those meetings was to determine the individuals that would be included in the next two phases of vaccine distribution. That's Phase 1B and 1C. The AICIP decided that Phase 1B will include those age 75 and older not living in congregate settings, as well as essential frontline workers in industries such as police, fire, teachers, daycare workers, and grocery store personnel. There are other essential workers that are included in Phase 1B, and there will be additional guidance that's provided by the state of Virginia and the CDC as vaccine is available to move to that phase. The AICIP also discussed who should be in Phase 1C. The decision was that that group would include those age 65 and older who had not been previously vaccinated, those with medical conditions putting them at a higher risk of COVID-19 complication, including such things as diabetes and congestive heart failure, and other essential workers. Again, the CDC and Virginia Department of Health will be issuing further guidance around these groups as we get closer to starting that phase. As more vaccine becomes available later in first quarter and as we enter into second quarter, AICIP will reconvene to prioritize those that they consider at highest risk and place them in Phase 2. We now want to take a look at some questions that we've received, and first, we have a question from Kelsey. Let's take a look.
Hi, my name is Kelsey. I've seen the images on your Facebook page that lists all the phases of the vaccine distribution, and I was wondering when you expect these phases to start? I noticed that I fall in Phase 4, which is with all the other U.S. residents, so when will I be able to get this vaccine?
Thanks for a great question, Kelsey. At this point, as I mentioned earlier, the AICIP has only determined who will be in Phase 1, whether that be 1A, 1B, or 1C. The CDC and AICIP will continue to evaluate information on the impact of COVID-19 from a health and society standpoint, and will make further decisions for the future phases based on that information. Dependent on additional vaccines approved and manufacturing capacity, it is anticipated that everyone will have access to receive the vaccine sometime in the summer of 2020, although those at higher risk will more than likely be offered vaccine sooner than that. So stay tuned, there will be much more information to come. We now have another question from Neil. Let's take a look.
Hi, my name is Neil, and I have a question about the vaccine. I understand the COVID vaccine is predicated on 10-plus years of research. Can you please explain how that research allowed this vaccine to be generated so quickly, and how it influences the relative safe nature of the actual vaccine? Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Great question. Both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccines are made using messenger RNA or mRNA technology. You are correct that while these are the first vaccines made using mRNA, the technology has been in the testing phase for over a decade. Other vaccines that are in development using this technology include influenza, rabies, and Zika. Messenger RNA is also being trialed in cancer care. An advantage of messenger RNA vaccines is that they do not contain a live virus, as many other vaccines do, and as a result, do not carry a risk of causing disease in the vaccinated person. Messenger RNA vaccines have shorter development times than traditional vaccines, which allowed the vaccine to be developed and studied more quickly in the case of COVID-19. This was especially important in this situation in order to get an effective, safe vaccine to the public in a very short period of time. I now want to share some information around our vaccine clinic process. With the receipt of the Pfizer vaccine almost a week ago, we have started hosting vaccine clinics for our frontline healthcare heroes, and wanted to provide our community with a behind-the-scenes look at one of our first vaccine clinics. I wanted to share a little bit of information around the vaccine clinic process and the vaccine storage generally. I'm sure that many of you have seen that these vaccines do require special storage. The Pfizer vaccine actually needs to be stored at ultra-cold temperatures between negative 60 and negative 80 centigrade. The reason for that is that messenger RNA technology, while allowing for faster vaccine production, does come with some challenges. Messenger RNA is somewhat unstable and can easily be degraded. For this reason, the messenger RNAs are housed in a lipid coating and are stored at a low temperature. This helps maintain vaccine effectiveness. While the Moderna vaccine will not require ultra-cold storage, it will still require frozen storage in order to get the full stability of six months from the vaccine itself. Once removed from the freezer, the vaccines have very strict requirements on how they should be managed. For example, the Pfizer vaccine may only be out of the freezer for at most three to five minutes, and must be returned back to the freezer unless we're going to leave it out for thawing. Once it is prepared, it must be used within six hours of dilution for administration. So there are many logistics that must be taken into account as we're scheduling and running our vaccine clinics. One of the other questions that might be on the minds of some of the viewers tonight is, what happens at a typical vaccine clinic? At the clinics that we've set up to this point for our healthcare heroes, our team members check in and are screened at the time of check-in first for active infection to make sure that they are not currently a COVID-19 carrier. They're then given vaccine information that they need to review about the vaccine itself. This fact sheet is provided by the CDC and the FDA, and is intended to provide in-depth information for those receiving the vaccine around the vaccine itself, as well as the safety of the vaccine. Once the individual has been cleared, there are some additional screening questions that are asked at the time of vaccination to make sure that we are providing a safe process. These include things such as contraindications to the vaccine itself. After vaccination, patients are monitored in an observation area for a minimum of 15 minutes. For those with a prior history of previous severe allergic reaction, the observation period is extended to a minimum of 30 minutes. In the event a reaction does occur, we have protocols in place, including medications and monitoring equipment, that can be used to treat the reaction. After the monitoring period is up, patients are given a card with vaccine information, including the lot number, the date they received the vaccine, and the site of administration of the vaccine. A follow-up visit is scheduled to receive the second dose either 21 days later for the Pfizer product, or 28 days later for the Moderna product. We now have a question from Alex. Let's take a look.
Hi, my name's Alex, and I live in Williamsburg. I had a quick question about the vaccine's side effects. Now that both the Moderna vaccine and the Pfizer vaccine have been approved, are there any differences between the two in terms of side effects? Could you explain the differences to me? Thanks.
That's a great question. The fact that both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine are both messenger RNA technology, what we've seen in the clinical trials information is that the efficacy of the vaccines and the safety of the vaccines is very similar. But as with any vaccine, there is always a chance of side effects. Most participants in the trials reported generally mild to moderate side effects with both the Pfizer and Moderna vaccine. Most of these side effects had onset one to two days after receipt of the vaccine, and typically lasted one to two days if they occurred. The most common side effects included injection site pain, fatigue, headache, muscle pain, joint pain, and rarely fever. These side effects are very similar to other vaccines, including the influenza vaccine and the shingles vaccine. The risk of any severe side effect is very rare. In general, side effects are more common after the second dose in younger adults, and in younger adults who have more robust immune system. Although it's difficult to directly compare the two vaccines, and data is still being collected, the side effect rate appears to be very similar. We now have a question from Carrie. Let's take a look.
With certain allergies, need to be concerned about this vaccine? And specifically, people who are allergic to eggs, who can't get the regular flu shot, are they able to get the COVID vaccine? And if it is a problem for them, are people who live in their same house able to get it, or would that be a problem for them as well?
Great question. Because this vaccine is made with messenger RNA, there are no egg or egg-related components in either of the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine, so they are not contraindicated in people with egg allergies. The CDC does consider a history of severe allergic reactions, such as anaphylaxis, to any other vaccine or injectable therapy as a precaution, but not a contraindication to the vaccination for both the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccine. These persons may still receive the messenger RNA vaccine, but they should consult with their healthcare provider to weigh the risk versus benefit of receiving that vaccine. Anyone who has a history of severe allergic reactions will be monitored closely for an extended period of time of 30 minutes. People in the same household as someone with an allergic reaction should still be able to receive the vaccine as long as those individuals do not themselves have any contraindications to the vaccine. I believe now we're going to turn to questions from our live audience, and April is going to assist me with those questions, and I will do my very best to answer them.
Thank you, Cindy. We've had several questions come in, and thank you so much for sending those in this evening. Our first question is, how will you know who is defined as the essential worker in the phase distribution categories?
Yeah, so I think that's a really good question, and I do think that we will get additional guidance from the state of Virginia. The CDC's Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices has certainly put together a framework, and that framework was really aimed, as I said, as looking at those essential frontline workers first. And so some of the other categories that will be included in those essential frontline workers will include manufacturing. I think we will get much more information around the details of that. As I mentioned earlier, individuals that are teachers, daycare, and support staff, the food industry, grocery stores will certainly be included in those groups, but I do believe we'll get much more detail from the state of Virginia through the Virginia Department of Health. When it does come to those other essential workers that are included in Phase 1B, we now start to talk about those that may be in infrastructure, such as power and water companies, other broader transportation-type industries, information system. So I do believe, since that is such a broad group, we will have to wait for additional guidance from both the CDC and our Virginia Department of Health. Really, the goal is to be able to balance the supply that we know that we have available for manufacturing with those next groups, but also have identified the groups early enough in the process so that we are prepared to move quickly through these phases based on vaccine availability within the state.
Thank you. The next question we have received is, how long does the vaccine last, and how long will it be effective?
You know, I think that's a very good question, and it's one that is still being studied under the clinical trials. So what we know as of now, based on when the first Moderna and Pfizer vaccines were administered back late last spring, is that we're roughly six months into the post-vaccine monitoring for those initial recipients of the vaccine. And the FDA will continue to follow these individuals that were in the clinical trials out for at least two years. And it's that type of ongoing clinical research that will inform us on the length that the vaccine will be effective. So at this point, what we can say for sure is, based on those individuals that have received the vaccine in the clinical trials, that we're seeing at least efficacy at the roughly 120-day mark, but we will continue to follow that, and that is information that the FDA and the CDC will release as they have more information available.
Thank you. Another question we have received, I am a patient at Riverside Medical Group. Will that be where I can get my vaccine?
Yes, I think there's going to be actually a number of different options to receive the vaccine. One will clearly be at the medical group, and we will work within the guidelines that Virginia Department of Health and the CDC issue. So for example, if you're a Riverside Medical Group patient that falls in the 75 and older time period, or age range, as we get to Phase 1B, our goal would be to provide that vaccine in our clinic settings. But we also know that there's going to be other outlets within the community, such as retail pharmacies. Many individuals go to retail pharmacies today in order to get their influenza vaccine and other vaccines, so that will certainly be an option. We also know that the local health departments will be holding vaccination clinics. So I do think, especially as we get into further groups and there's greater vaccine availability, there will be a number of different venues in the community in order to get vaccine, but certainly Riverside Medical Group will be one of those areas.
Thank you. Another question we've received is, can you pick which vaccine you get?
Well, as of now, because we have limited availability, there's not really much of an option to pick the vaccines. And right now, because Pfizer and Moderna are both the same technology, have similar efficacy within the age groups that were studied, have similar side effect profiles, while you need to get dose one and dose two from the same manufacturer, there's really not differences of any significance between those vaccines. And quite honestly, because of the very limited amount, we are administering the vaccine that we have on hand. At this point, while we started our vaccination journey with Pfizer almost a week ago, we do anticipate that we will be moving to the Moderna vaccine as early as next week, just based on the supplies on hand. As additional vaccines, the clinical trials reach the point where they can go to the FDA and be evaluated, I think each of those vaccines will need to be looked at individually to ensure that there is no variation based on either age or other factors, and that may become an issue that we need to discuss go forward based on the vaccines coming to market. But at this point, for what's available today between the Pfizer and the Moderna, there's really not an opportunity to select. It's really based on what's available at the time.
Thank you, Cindy. Couple other questions we have. Next is, how will I be notified when I can receive my vaccine?
I think that's a really good question, and I think we don't have all of the answers at this point. I can tell you what our experience has been with our healthcare workers, is we have worked within the framework that was provided by Virginia Department of Health, and we have done that notification of our own team members. And so, again, we've got a fairly closed system to be able to do that, but I think the question's going to be, once we get into Phase B, I think it'll be very clear if you're in an age group that qualifies, but I think the bigger question's going to be, if I'm in an essential frontline worker, how will that work? I do believe that the state health department and the local health departments will play a key role in identification and confirmation of those groups, but will clearly need to work with local employers in order to ensure that the message gets out that this employee group is now eligible for the vaccine. So I think there's a lot of details that still need to be worked out, and we'll be looking for the state health department to clearly be taking the lead on that guidance, but working with local employers through the process.
Thank you, Cindy. Last question we'll address right now is, with your expertise, can you provide any information on other vaccines that are currently in development?
Yeah, so worldwide, there's over 200 vaccines under development. There's really eight to 10 that we've been watching in the U.S., and some of those I think folks have heard about, such as the Oxford-AstraZeneca vaccine, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, and there are several of those that are in Phase 3 clinical trials. In fact, there was a media release earlier today, I believe it was, that there's the expectation that an additional vaccine may have enough clinical trial data to present to the Food and Drug Administration as early as January, which I think is very exciting. With each of those vaccines that are behind these first two, they are using a different technology. So when I mentioned earlier that I think we'll have to look at the clinical data when it's available and presented to the FDA, that's primarily because they're using a technology called viral vector technology, and so I think we'll have to see, based on the data, are there any differences potentially in efficacy within, whether it be age groups or other types of... or other types of groups, that may inform whether there needs to be a priority for who gets what vaccine in the future. But there are a number of other vaccines that we do expect in the coming months will have enough clinical data to go before the FDA for review and potential emergency use So I think at this point, we actually want to show a video to the group. This is a video from Dr. Williams, who is a primary care and family medicine physician at Riverside Brentwood Medical Center in Newport News. Dr. Williams was among the first to receive the COVID-19 vaccine at Riverside and wanted to share her story with us. Let's take a look.
When I think about why I entered this process, I'm a person of wisdom, and I needed to do my research to look at if this vaccine was something that I should partake in. I also had to consider my roles in this life, in this journey. A mother, I have two young sons. My role as a daughter, I have a mother who's over 80. As a physician, that's my job. That's what I do, but that's not necessarily all of who I am. I also specifically wanted to look at the fact that I'm a brown person. And when we look at our history here in America in terms of medicine and the clinical community and the research community, it has not been right at all. And so knowing about Henrietta Lacks, knowing about the Tuskegee Institute experiment, and I would even say about things like Dr. Sims, who is a GYN physician who did horrible research on slave women, absolutely without their consent, without anesthesia, but we use some of the things and philosophies that he discovered based on those really brave women. I had to take all of that into consideration and make the decision that I feel is best for me. My hope is that through taking the vaccine, knowing that there have been trials and there are other vaccines, that I'll play a role somehow in the legacy of America, of our world, of brown people, of black people, of physicians, of women, a positive role, one that I didn't anticipate last year this time, but is here.
I want to thank you all for joining us this evening. We hope that this virtual town hall has provided answers to some of the questions you have around the vaccine. We are committed to providing our community with updates as these are available. Our goal is to help our team members, our patients, and the community we serve make the best decisions for their health. Thank you and good evening.